Call the meeting to order. I want to welcome everybody here. I call on councillor Fair to bring the opening, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Today, I would like to recognize missions or ministries that make a difference in our city and around the world. We have many excellent ministries in the city. I'm reluctant to mention any because I know I'm going to miss some, but I'm going to take a stab at it. There's ministries like Today House, Agape House, Community Outreach, YFC, Rock Eastland, Lions Club, Southeast Helping Hands, just to name a few. Just over a week ago, two other organizations officially opened a few new buildings that house ministries that are making a difference in our community as well as around the world. The thing about these ministries is that not all of this is done to serve other people. One of these organizations is the Four Winds Distribution Center where people that are less fortunate can come for help when they find that they need food, furniture, appliances, clothing, and various other items, including cars. Most of these people would rather just go out and buy what they need, but they find that because of the circumstances beyond their control, they are unable to. Distribution Center is located at the rear of the Southland campus. It was just completed and opened a week and a half ago. Four years ago, Four Winds started providing cars to those less fortunate. So, in the last four years, they have given away forty-one cars. That's quite a few. These people are so much appreciated the help they receive in their trying times. Unfortunately, many people lose their jobs and aren't able to purchase that car, fridge, or whatever they need, so they are able to acquire one from the Four Winds Distribution Center. In addition to the Distribution Center, Four Winds built a housing building three years ago. In this home, they provide housing and support for people with life-controlling behaviors that have a desire to change their life and once again become positive contributors to the society they live in. This facility generally houses thirty adults who graduate from the program annually, so it rotates every year. Another building that was officially opened a week ago was the Church Renewal Retreat and Training Center. It's located toward the rear of the Southland Church and was added to provide a space for the Church Renewal weekends that bring in pastors and church leaders from around the world. To date, we have seen twenty-one countries represented at these retreats, including Mexico, the United States, Iceland, Uganda, Kenya, Germany, Cuba, Paraguay, among others. The leadership team of Church Renewal presently mentors approximately two hundred pastors and church leaders around the world. So, I congratulate the ministries of Four Winds and Church Renewal on these new openings and trust that these buildings will fulfill what God called them to do. We live in a very benevolent city, and I trust that we will see more community organizations continue to grow as they meet the needs of those less fortunate in the city.
Great. Thank you, councillor Fair. We have the agenda in front of us, and I'll ask you to all add twelve A, and that's the RCMP Advisory Committee. Councillor Funk just wants to bring an update in regards to that. Can I have a motion to accept the amended agenda? Councillor Penner, seconded by councillor Swagstra. Any discussion? Call for the question. All those in favor. Carried. We have the minutes in front of us for March twenty-first regular council meeting. This is on page one. You've all had a chance to review those. Can I have a motion to accept those, please? Councillor Penner, seconded by councillor Fair. Any discussion? Call for the question. All those in favor. Carried. No business arising from the minutes. We will now move to nine A. We have the counts payable in the back of the book. Can I have a motion for the counts payable, please? Councillor Siemens, seconded by councillor Penner. Any discussion? Call for the question. All those in favor. Carried. We have bylaw twenty-eight D. This is first reading in regards to Brant Street, page four. Mr. Workineteen.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this bylaw two-zero-eight-zero is an application for rezoning for a property located at one-ninety-seven Brant Street. The purpose of the rezoning is to consider a change for the property that's currently zoned C-two, commercial community, to RMD, residential medium density. There is the initial information that is provided in the file. The recommendation is that council give this bylaw first reading so that a public hearing can then be scheduled and the required advertising can then be issued.
Thank you. How would council like to proceed? Councillor Fair?
I would approve.
Approve, seconded by councillor Swagstra. Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This is something that there's a lot of houses or properties in the area that are doing exactly what this developer is looking at doing, and so I'd like to see what the neighborhood would like to say about it.
Very good. Councillor Swagstra.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Normally, when we have a rezoning request like this, that in most cases, we do grant first reading because you want the opportunity to have a public hearing. Certainly, on the face of it, this is a common type of use in this area. There's a rural residential medium density in the immediate vicinity, so certainly on its face, there does seem to be a case here, so we look forward to hearing what the applicant has to say along with the neighborhood.
Any further discussion from council? Seeing none, anything in closing? Call for the question. All those in favor. Carried. We will move to nine C, bylaw twenty-eight-one. This is the Fire Prevention and Emergency Services. This is on page eighteen. First reading, Mr. Workineteen.
This bylaw twenty-eight-one, it was recently presented to council at the Strategic Priorities Committee meeting of March twenty-first, as was noted in the report and the discussion that was provided at that meeting. The bylaw is being recommended as an additional clarity document in order to provide a very clear direction to both City of Steinbach firefighting staff, City Council, and also the members of the public insofar as the different activities and services as authorized or the city has authorized for its fire department. This is something that is also recommended by the Office of the Fire Commissioner. And as far as the document itself, we recommend that council give this first reading.
Thank you. How would council like to proceed? Councillor Siemens?
Motion to approve.
First reading, thank you, seconded by councillor Funk. Any discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is a good bylaw that will provide some authority to our fire office and fire prevention and emergency services. I do have some concerns. I would like to see how this goes forward, but the only concern I would have is duplication of services what some of the private companies are providing in Steinbach with fire extinguish services and some code requirements and some of the other areas. But I think this gives the fire department some areas that they can focus on, gives them work, and it does actually outline what the responsibilities are, so I think it is a good step in the right direction.
Okay. Thank you. Councillor Funk? Anything further from council? Anything in closing?
All right, council. Obviously, what we have in front of us is a bylaw that outlines clearly what our fire services are already doing. This makes it more formal, and it covers it under a bylaw which protects our firefighters and also protects the city in some regard and makes it clear. As for the question that councillor Siemens brings up and that they're overlapping with private services, I think the intention is certainly not to do that, but I think it's an important note to take under consideration.
Call for the question. All those in favor. Carried. Thank you. We have bylaw nine D, bylaw twenty-seventy-six. This is Administrative Penalty Bylaw, page twenty-nine. Mr. Workineteen.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this also is a new bylaw that is being recommended for first reading. It is entitled the Administrative Penalty Bylaw. Reason for this proposal stems from the province of Manitoba recently enacting the Municipal Bylaw Enforcement Act, as again was updated to City Council in a previous Strategic Priorities Committee meeting late in 2016. The current mechanism to provide the ultimate enforcement and application of fines for municipal bylaws within the province of Manitoba is a fairly lengthy and convoluted process through summary convictions. The attempt through the change in legislation was to provide for a streamlined process that municipalities would have an option that had more localized control as far as the process to attempt to adjudicate some of these matters if it got to that point. While the vast majority of the city's bylaws are settled on a voluntary basis, what this Administrative Penalty Bylaw will do will allow a screening officer an adjudication process if it comes to the point of formal enforcement. The information and draft is provided in the package, and as I said before, a recommendation is for council to give this bylaw first reading.
Thank you. Mr. Workineteen, just before we proceed, question in regards to the administrative penalties themselves and the dollar values. Right now, this reflects what we currently are doing. If we give this first reading today, is there still an opportunity to actually change those values going forward?
Yes. If there is a review process that council would wish to proceed in addition before second reading, then those amendments could be made prior to that being introduced.
Okay. Thank you. All right, council, how would you like to proceed? Councillor Swagstra?
I'll move first reading.
Thank you, seconded by councillor Penner. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think frankly the most important thing to note is that this is being passed as a requirement of the province. The province sets standards for municipalities, and one of those that's been established is the new Municipal Bylaw Enforcement Act, which is requiring municipalities to establish this process. And so that instead of every single bylaw fraction that can't be resolved informally, instead of saying that has to immediately go to the summary conviction process, now there is a turnip where there's a screening officer that can be designated in order to adjudicate these things. And then there's still an appeal process beyond that in certain cases. So, I think it's appropriate, obviously, that we pass it because we have to follow the provincial direction on this, but also that we make sure that we try to set up the best process possible so that way we're relatively minor offenses that we're able to deal with those quickly and efficiently because the reality is that when there is a bylaw fraction, we want it to resolve as soon as possible so that way the process ends. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Yes, just to add some comments to that, it's interesting to me that the enforcement of our own bylaws is sometimes very difficult, and sometimes we wish we had more teeth to pursue infractions. I hope that we will find that this will aid us in doing so, in looking after those infractions and resolving them ourselves. One thing I'd like to also add is if we could have a review of the fees, parking or handicap, particularly the handicap parking violation seems very small to me, the fine for that bill. I would request that we would review those fees and make sure that they are currently up to date.
Thank you. Further discussion? Councillor Siemens.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with the comments made, too. I think in the past, the city has been frustrated with how our bylaws have been not enforced, but the financial and the penalties and how to address them in a speedy manner. I think this does, and it gives us as a city, it gives us our own opportunity to do that. So, I agree with the principle of this bylaw.
Thank you. Further discussion? Councillor Fair?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I have a question. Maybe it's from administration. It says here, including parking bylaws. Now, does this include any other bylaws, like if we have homeowners that aren't complying with some of their conditions of the development agreement? Is that something that would be fall under this category as well, or is that something that's still not addressed here?
At this point, the bylaw is drafted to only apply to bylaw thirteen-fifty and sixteen-seventy-nine, which is the city's parking and traffic bylaws. What this administrative penalty bylaw does have is a mechanism within it that when and if council is prepared to proceed to add additional bylaws to come under this process, those could be added at a later date. So, that format is there.
Thank you. So, just to clarify for council, this is the first step possibly of more steps down the path. Right now, this sets the parameters of how this process takes place when it comes to parking bylaws. In the future, when we do want to actually see these other bylaws come into under this, they will then, it'll be actually fairly simple to add them in. And so, I think this is the first step and is an appropriate step. So, councillor Swagstra.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just in closing, I would just want to state that I agree with the comments made, that we have to review the fees, and obviously, that doesn't have to be done right now, but before we give second reading. I will note in particular that the current penalty for parking violation, if paid within seven days of violation, is ten dollars, and the adjudication request fee is twenty-five dollars. So, you know, if we don't change the fees, you get to pay twenty-five dollars in order to see if you can get out of paying ten. Obviously, there's a bit of a problem there. And I also agree that the handicap parking fee of fifty dollars is also relatively low. So, I see a strong case to be made for increasing those. I don't recommend increasing the adjudication request fee because I think it should be kept as low as possible so that way people actually are able to access that. And obviously, at a minimum, the adjudication request fee should not be more than what the fine is. That would seem to defeat the purpose of what we're trying to do here.
Good. Thank you, council. Obviously, this is a first step, and so we look forward to this moving forward. Call for the question of first reading. All those in favor. Carried. When it comes to the administrative penalties that are under this bylaw at this present time, how would council like to proceed with this? Would you like something, would you like to see some recommendations from administration after reviewing what a few other communities do and also what makes sense? General consensus that you're comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. So, before this comes to second and third reading, I will ask for that report from administration. All right. Then we have the Financial Plan Resolution on page forty-two. Can I have a mover, please? Sorry, Mr. Workineteen, is there anything to add first?
No.
Page forty-two.
Yes. The resolution, as is presented, is a follow-up. Council had dealt with this matter a couple of meetings ago with respect to approving the financial plan in principle. Now, the full information is provided, and we're requesting a resolution in its entirety to, for the financial plan to be adopted.
Okay. Thank you. Councillor Penner, you'd like to move this?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Seconded by councillor Fair. Go ahead.
Yes. This is the adoption of the city's 2017 financial plan, and it will bring us a municipal mill rate of thirteen-point-nine-three with a capital budget program of twenty-four-point-six million.
Thank you. Further discussion, councillor Fair? No? Anything further from council? Councillor Swagstra?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's great we have so many readings on these things, and that way, we make sure we carefully scrutinize and such. I will be voting against because this is the financial plan. I've given my reasons for it before. I will also save the time and say that on the following one, bylaw twenty-seventy-eight, which is connected to this, I'll vote against that as well. So, there we go.
Any others?
Any others I'm going to vote against?
All right. Thank you, councillor Swagstra, for being brief. That's perfect. Anything further from council? Anything in closing?
Nothing.
All right. Council, obviously, the financial plan is important for us, and it guides where we're heading in this year and beyond, and appreciate all the work that you've put into it. We don't always agree on absolutely everything, but by far, the majority of what we see in here, we all agree with, and so I appreciate the work you've put into it. Call for the question. All those in favor. Opposed? All right. Bylaw twenty-seventy-eight, this is on page fifty-nine. Mr. Workineteen, we know that this, what this entails in general. Do you have anything to add?
Nothing to add.
All right. I'd like a motion for third reading, please. Councillor Siemens, seconded by councillor Fair. Any discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've got lots of discussion. This, in fact, outlines in particular what the mill rates are for the various areas of the town.
Thank you. Anything further from council? Anything in closing? Call for the question. All those in favor. Opposed? Nine G, we have bylaw twenty-seventy-nine, page sixty-four. Mr. Workineteen, anything to add?
Nothing to add.
All right. Council, councillor Fair moves, seconded by councillor Swagstra. Any discussion?
No. I think we all know this goes directly to the chamber activities, so except for five percent administration piece, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Further discussion? Anything in closing? Call for the question. All those in favor. Carried. We have the 2017 Emergency Plan Amendments on page sixty-eight. Mr. Workineteen, do you have anything to add or to highlight here?
I'll just highlight, this is an annual process that the city's emergency coordinator does do a review of the city's emergency plan. The section by section, there is updates in section one to the maps and some of the businesses identified within the emergency plan, and population updates in the second section, and again, just some miscellaneous updates. Recommendation is for council to approve by resolution as drafted.
Very good. Council, how would you like to proceed? Councillor Siemens?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Seconded by councillor Penner. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an important document as we, as the city of Steinbach and the Hanover municipality work together on various issues regarding the hazards around Steinbach and the RM. But one more time, I'd like to acknowledge Dennis Fassert and his team that puts this together. There's a tremendous amount of detail that goes into this and the ongoing review of it. It's beyond what I would be capable of, but I certainly want, in respect what they do for our community and the RM of Hanover.
Thank you. Further discussion? Call for the question. All those in favor. Carried. We have excavator licenses on page sixty-nine. Can I have a motion to approve, please? Councillor Fair, seconded by councillor Funk. Any discussion? Call for the question. All those in favor. Mr. Workineteen, has there ever been discussion on excavator licenses in the last ten years?
I don't believe there has.
Why do they come here anyway?
There is a provincial requirement that they come here?
Well, because it is a license that is issued by the city, not unlike business licenses, which council also approves. It's just excavator licenses tend to come one at a time. Business licenses normally is by schedule.
Thank you. Any questions of council? Seeing none. We have correspondence and petitions from the Federation of Canadian Municipalities on page seventy-two, FCM Legal Defense Fund. Any comments, questions? Take it as information. We have from the Minister of Indigenous and Municipal Relations on page seventy-three. We have some good news. Obviously, Mr. Workineteen, do you have anything to add there?
It, I haven't been able to secure a significant amount of additional information. However, the grant, as is noted in the correspondence, does relate to the planning and design work for the proposed water supply plant, and our hope and anticipation is that the federal and provincial governments will follow up with funding for the actual construction in due course.
That's correct. So, we actually applied for seven-point-five million, and so this is one-point-eight of the seven-point-five. Is that correct?
Truly, application was for ten million in total.
Right, including our third.
Correct.
Yeah, or twenty-five percent, sorry.
Yes.
All right. Council, any questions? Take it as information. We'll wait to hear further. We have the Conservation District Minutes on page seventy-four. Any questions? Seeing none, we'll take that as information. We have twelve A, we have the RCMP Advisory Committee. Mr. Funk, would you like to bring that report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, council. And I'd like to start my report with a big thanking to council and our, and Mr. Workineteen, our administrator, because if we can bring back to a time in early November when we met with the RCMP Division and we had a specific ask for them, and that was to bring a traffic detachment to Steinbach, it sounded like a long shot. It looked like a long shot. We were sitting across the table, and it didn't seem like things were going to happen, but they've answered our request, and a traffic detachment will be coming to Steinbach. And I just want to say a few things why we championed it as an RCMP committee. It was very important to us because, number one, safety. As we were doing our investigation, we started finding out that accidents and fatality in accidents outside of Winnipeg, we were leading the problems. Also, the incident numbers, like alcohol or alcohol-related crimes in motor vehicles, again, we were the highest outside of Winnipeg. Our traffic numbers, when we started doing traffic and we started looking, for example, between Park Road and Blumenhorn, we had the same, almost the same amount of vehicles between Deacon's Corner and the two-oh-six highway on Route One. So, we found that, we felt with the incidents that were happening, the accidents, and the amount of people on our highways, we needed something, something had to change. We needed some help. And we also realized it would be a huge benefit to our members because they would be able to do their policing instead of other traffic while they're doing. And the greatest benefit that we will see in the southeast is in the rural complement because as we've been adding officers regularly in Steinbach, that's not been happening necessarily from the province side in the rural detachment. So, with these RCPs coming in, they will be funded by the province, so there will be no cost to us or the RM, but they will definitely enhance our ability to police. It is, like I said, it was provincially, they're provincially funded, so the initiatives will come from the province. But we have to remember another benefit for us is our Staff Sergeant Lanega will have a large amount of influence with them because they will be in the same office with, as his detachment is, and so he will actually be able to guide them quite well. They'll start close to the end of this month, and they'll be coming in with two members, and then in incremental time, they'll be adding members till there's a full complement of six. So, that's probably the most exciting piece of evidence, or the most exciting thing I can tell you right now. But we're really, really thankful that council did come, helped us champion. We came there, I think, when we came there as a large group, I think it really showed our sincerity to the RCMP Division. And, you know, when they saw the numbers and they saw the research we had done, I think that really helped tip the scales in our favor, and I want to just really thank you guys for coming out. It was really good that we worked together. Another thing I want to talk about is we've gotten two community constables. We've got, there was a transfer, and we lost Constable Kevin Nguyen, who was very instrumental in the DARE program, but in trade, we kind of got a new initiative from the province, and they are community constables. They are a step down from a regular constable, but they are very active in what they can do. They can, they can't necessarily go be first at a scene or a call, but they can go along with, so they can be backup. They're working very well with the community. They're getting well-known. They're training DARE, and they're executing DARE program in schools. That's working very well. That will be done in May. I was talking to Staff Sergeant Lanega, and he said after May, he's going to be introducing them to the Mental Health Act, and he will be using them for mental health supervision. These, again, are paid by the province again, so it's no cost to us. It's just a big bonus. Also, there was, we were given the task to report on the CSO position, so we've done that. And as we've researched the CSO position, we've kind of, I think we found several noteworthy items to talk about. Now, as we all know, the pilot project was launched in the city of Thompson in 2015. It was very successful in that community, but as we compared our communities, we found them to be vastly different, and thus, our policing needs are also very diverse from Thompson. So, we also then started to review the duties because we got a, like, I guess, a document from the province of what they're allowed to do, and we found that they were very limited in their responsibilities. To, my best to explain this properly, they're a close kin to a bylaw officer, basically. So, we kind of found out, or we recognized that maybe our best benefit from them would be with the Mental Health Act, that an RCP member be with the Mental Health Act, that an RCP member could leave a person in the CSO's custody until psychiatric assessment could be completed, thus letting the RCP officer return to duty much sooner. Now, we found a few challenges with this. The biggest one was that the CSO would be an employee of the city, paid for by the city, so we'd have daily duties for this officer to perform, so much of the mental health supervision would most likely be done at overtime at a cost to the city. So we are very thankful for the province for initiating a great program like this and believe it will work well in many communities across our province. Having said that, at this time, the RCP committee recommends to not act on the CSO program at this time unless there's other changes that do happen. And one last thing, I want you guys to be careful, because this summer, we're having our Traffic Safety Day. We're coming to a stop sign near you. Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you, Counselor Funk, and thank you for all the work that you've done. I know you've taken that, the Traffic Services Division under your wing over the last year and a half, and that work has obviously paid off, so we appreciate it. It is a team effort, but it certainly is very helpful that you've really taken that under your wing, so thank you, Counselor Funk. Any questions for Counselor Funk? Counselor Penner?
I just wanted to commend the committee for their work. That's Counselor Swagstra, Counselor Funk as well, and for their work in bringing this Traffic Division constables to our community, because this has been something that has been talked about for a while and has been very necessary, and very much appreciate that work. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions, we have a motion to, can we have a motion to adjourn, please? Counselor Penner, seconded by Counselor Siemens, all those in favor. Carried, thank you.